Welcome to Ungagged Interviews with me, Neil Anderson. This is a short three-part series interviewing councillors from Glasgow City Council. Coming up in the next couple of weeks, we've got Graham Campbell, who we have spoken to many times before. He is a member of the SNP. And then also Matt Care, who is a Labour councillor. But for our first one, we are speaking to Elaine Gallagher from the Scottish Green Party. She was elected to the council for the first time in May this year. But if you've listened to Ungagged before, you know we like her music. So we're going to start off with a track from Glasgow band The Wakes. This is 'The Battle of George Square'.
So yeah, I mean, it's three months in and we're starting to figure out just what we're doing. And we're starting to figure out what we're doing. We've got support from the council officers, which is, we're learning how to use that. We've also got like the, we planned ahead because Kim felt five years ago that she had just been dropped into it and didn't know what she was doing. So prior to the election, partly the build-up of the campaign was training for the prospective councillors.
Okay, that sounds good.
With Kim and whoever else saying, right, here is what you're likely to be doing in the first few weeks. Here's how you navigate and negotiate the place. And also what's been happening is that it was really good that the councillors group is a lot more cohesive now than it was five years ago. So you've got John and Martha and Chrissie actually know what they're doing because they've been around the block once. And they're not really fractious and arguing among themselves. They're actually working as a team with the rest of us.
Yes, I'm thinking of a person, this would go into the edit, obviously, I'm thinking of a person.
Yeah, I read, like you mentioned the buses, Bill and the other motion for the buses. And I was reading the motion and I was looking at the amendments and looking at the three pages of amendments. Yeah. So yeah, so yeah, there's been that. And we're kind of looking out for each other through training and making sure that we all kind of get together.
That's good.
And we've got kind of social arrangements already made as well. So what we were doing was going out for people's birthdays and going out as a group after the full council sessions. And making sure that we actually kind of do these things and look out for one another. So with that and with the support of the actual council officers and the support officers and things, we're still trying to figure out quite how to use the systems properly. But we're getting, or I'm certainly getting less feeling that I'm in over my head.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, so I got, I'm chair of a working group. And it's taken me over the whole reset to actually get hold of the council officers who are going to be working to my working group.
Yeah.
And the clerk of, from committee support. So that's all just starting to happen now. So I'm beginning to feel that, yeah, this is going to take shape soon. And also I've already been doing, like earlier today, was the Audit Committee for Jobs and Business Glasgow. So that's, the work is kind of rolling along quite nicely. Plus lots and lots of emails from Irish constituents about their business.
Yes.
And that is...
Is that the biggest complaint that you get?
Well, Gavernhill, the fly tipping problem is atrocious. And the thing is that there's several problems all kind of manifest as one big thing. Because it's the conditions of the backcourts and the streets. And the problem is littering and fly tipping and bulk waste dumping and also drug use. So what you've got is in the backcourts, the drug users will kick in the door and there's maybe 20 of them shooting up and then leaving their works lying on the floor. And actually shitting in the bin areas and things like that. So the problem with the look of the place, people just see the backcourt as a mess. But it's from a whole bunch of different things that you have to kind of unpick and solve separately. But when you only solve one of them, the rest of them, it's like the broken window effect. So it makes it harder to solve the rest of them if you only go after one. And it makes it harder to solve the one if you don't go after the others. So what we're looking at is, yeah, enforcement powers to go after the fly-by-night landlords and the slum landlords who empty flats and don't actually pay bulk uplift charges. They just leave the mattresses and fridges and white goods and all that kind of stuff. Either in the side lanes or just in the front gardens of the closes, just piled up.
Yep.
But you need evidence to prosecute people, so you need witnesses. You need witnesses to be willing to come forward. And you also need them to actually trust the system that there will be prosecutions. Which historically, environmental prosecutions have been very difficult to actually get from the sheriff. So this means that we need to go not only to enforcement powers from the council, but also involving the police and SEPA and getting the laws changed so that the powers to actually prosecute fly tipping are more easy to achieve and prosecutions are more easy to achieve. So you've got that, the enforcement issue. And some people who are Greens don't like the idea of enforcement. But to be honest, if you want to actually keep a civil society, you have to make sure that there are rules and you have to get people to comply them. And yeah, that does involve involving the police if necessary. So better ways, when we're not actually enforcing the rules down, you've also got the community engagement and people actually taking ownership and respect of the gardens. Like you wouldn't dump waste in your bedroom. Why would you dump and waste in your backyard? Or somebody else is dumping waste in the backyard. But if you get everybody to like take responsibility for, say, a group of closes in a back lane. And maybe because like some of this area is owned, it's not actually council land. It's not the council's responsibility to clean it. The council actually can't take that responsibility legally.
Yep.
It's legally the landowners, the landlords, the tenants, the house associations is the responsibility. So what we're doing is trying to get groups together to, for example, apply for grants from the council to put gates up. And, you know, we can provide resources from the council, like skips and whatever. And a couple of weekends from now, I'm going to be putting on my steel toe cap boots and going to help a back lane clean up because we've got the skip ordered. We've got a few people who actually are planning to show. If anybody else wants to come along, they've only got four so far. More than willing to include anybody else who wants to come along to Bowman Road, Bowman Street, sorry, on the 27th of August.
Just one thing on what you said. Is there any thoughts or whatever on, you were saying about drug users, about providing safe places?
That's my plan. What I want to do is make some arrangement or some project with Lewis Massey, who's got the portfolio for addiction. And get Addiction Services to provide possibly safe use vans or something. I don't actually know, I've never actually been involved in that kind of thing. But that's my idea, is to get the drug users out of the backcourts, into safe use spaces. Get the victims out of the way of the drug dealers and then bring in the police to prosecute the actual criminals.
Scottish Greens on Glasgow City Council have ten councillors.
Yes.
Will that be, what can it influence?
It's going to make a huge influence because one of the things that you need to consider as well is that there's only one votes difference between Labour and SNP. SNP of 37 versus Labour 36, I think, or something along those lines. So what that means is that when the Greens decide to support or reject a motion, that motion really gets supported or rejected because we can put all of our, but we don't actually flip, obviously. But what we can do is discuss it and put our support behind it if it seems good. And that has happened, like, you know, the four-day week motion got passed without any amendments.
So was that a Scottish Green party motion at the moment?
Yeah.
Is there any other Scottish Green party motions that have been through so far?
We've only had the one for council.
Well, it's been a short time since the council have been elected yet.
We've only had the one for council, so that was our motion and that was successful. In the City Administration Committee, however, it was a Greens' request that the communities fund £55 million be dependent on the applicants. This is the main charity funding for the city. And we required that the applicants actually commit to fair pay for the workers.
Excellent.
And to commit to paying a living wage and to working towards the fair employment.
Yeah.
And that was our amendment. So it was going in already. The paper as presented didn't have our requirement. We amended it, or actually, this, in the CAC, it's John and Martha and Dan Hutchinson. So they put the proposal forward and that passed. So it was the Greens who have actually got charities paying fair wages in the city. This is following the Scottish government requirement anyway, so it was pushing an open door.
Yes.
But we needed to actually make the amendment because the council officers were just doing business as usual and actually resisted the change. So, you know, political direction, this is what we actually want.
Yeah.
And that passed.
Well, that's good. That's definitely the kind of things that Ungagged believes in getting done. Well done.
Cheers. So yeah, we have, the plans for the future are pretty much in the manifesto at the moment. It's early to say that we're going to set up projects to work on. We're working at the moment on agreeing the strategic plan for the council as a whole for the next five years term. And we're at the moment kind of matching what's in our manifesto and what do the SNP manifesto say? And where do they agree and where do they disagree and where do we actually have to push?
Yeah. So what's the time scale for, for when that whole process will finish?
We need to have the strategic plan agreed by, I think it's for council after next, so it's mid-October.
Yep.
Mid-October, November. So obviously, we also have to, because we're a democratic party, we have to take advice or cognizance of what the actual members want. So we've got the questionnaires going out in the Glasgow members to basically give us their priorities. And there's a political cooperation working group that's with the council group and the branch and the membership that all basically advises on that as well.
So is that a standard thing for Scottish Greens to consult the membership before making kind of big decisions like that?
It's meant to be. It doesn't always happen, but it is meant to be. And it's become more, it really only started to matter when the SNP offered power sharing of the government last year. So that process was developed basically to figure out what we were going to do and it had to involve the membership. But previously, the Greens' policy is only actually officially made at the Greens' Autumn Conference. So, you know, the membership are the ones who actually set policy for the party. It's not the representatives, representatives, representative members.
What use do you have as a councillor in your current term?
Well, I've already spoken about cleaning up the streets of the wards and addressing the problems of fly tipping, et cetera. But that's just for that small region. And it's a huge problem for that small region. But what we've got is, over the next eight years, Glasgow City Council has actually committed to going zero carbon by 2030. And it's been estimated that the cost of actually doing that will be £40 billion. That's with 11 figures, £40 billion could be.
Wow, that's a lot to make.
And my working group, the Just Transition Working Group, has the job of figuring out just how that's going to happen. Where the money's going to come from, who's going to spend it, what are they going to spend it on? Clearly, it can't all come from the council. Large amounts of it are not going to come from the city, from the central government either. Although I see that Westminster have given £70 billion to a two-man consultancy somewhere in Cornwall to do just transition. This is being questioned as we speak.
Yeah.
If they could just send it to my working group, then we could just pay for just transition for the entire city of Glasgow. But no, we're going to have to involve all of the organisations of Glasgow. There's an organisation that's set up for COP called Sustainable Glasgow, which has kind of become dormant since COP. So what we're looking at is reviving it, getting the people involved in that together again and involving universities, industry, Chamber of Commerce, landlords, housing associations, all of the economic activities of the city gearing towards going zero carbon, but also making sure that we don't do what the Tories did to the coalfields and destroying people's jobs along the way.
Yep.
So that's why it's just transition, as in justice.
Yes.
So that's, for the city, that's my job, that's my working group. And that's my portfolio over the next five years. Yeah.
Well, that will certainly keep me busy, wouldn't it?
To be honest, I think that's the easy one, the waste bins, the waste in the back streets, that's going to be the hard job.
So if you decide to go for being re-elected after that five years, what would the further aims and the longer time scale be?
Well, to be honest, the jobs that I've taken on for these two kind of main areas, five years is only where you can put in a start. So if I should go for reelection, then what I would want to be doing is making sure that I leave the job running against the possibility that I don't get re-elected. But, you know, to hand over to an ongoing working project. But getting the streets cleaned up and the community engaged in Gavernhill itself and getting the city to go zero carbon, both of those are career projects overall.
Yep.
So what I would be doing is hoping to actually take the bases that I've set up in the first term and running with it and making sure it actually happens in the next term.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds good and reasonable because all that stuff is not just five years, is it?
No, it's, no, these are lifetime projects.
Okay. Towards the end of last session of Glasgow City Council, which ended in May this year, vegan councillors were able to secure at least an investigation into the possibility of free bus pilot for free bus travel in Glasgow. Do you think that will come to fruition, will that actually happen? And what would the benefits be of free bus travel?
We would certainly hope that it would happen. It's going to run into problems of bus regulation, not even re-regulation because the buses aren't regulated at the moment. And if you wanted free bus travel, then you'd have to actually... And if you wanted free bus travel, then you'd have to actually pay the bus companies, which would be easier to do if we actually dragged the bus companies back in to be in, uh, council run, which means bus regulation. Um, it would also be good to include the rest of public transport, so Scottish, uh, passenger transport altogether in our free public transport initiative.
Hmm.
Um. Now, I reckon that it would be a brilliant thing to do because the impact already of the Scottish government providing free bus transport for, free bus travel for under twenty twos has meant that kids can go to school, that the cost of transport for their families and that the lowest paid people, um, is already.
And that, that, the, the under twenty two was a Scottish impact initiative?
It was that, but that was government level. So that's already having a great impact for schoolkids, uh, young people trying to get into work. The lowest paid sections of, of the population who don't actually have to cough up. Like, if, if you imagine, um, say a low paid family has three kids who need to pay bus fares to get to school every day. Even at the cheapest tickets, that's a hundred and fifty quid a month that very often a family can't afford, so that's immediately, um, that the lowest paid family is better off. If you've got the adults in the family also having free bus travel or free public transport, then that's another hundred quid a month. That goes towards, um, reducing the, the poverty crisis. I'm not talking about cost of living crisis because it is a poverty crisis. Um. So what also would happen is that we would reduce the demand for, um, individual cars, which would help go towards the zero carbon agenda. It would also improve the public health because the air emissions would be reduced as getting fewer cars on, cars on the roads. Um, and what that also would mean is that as the bus companies go towards electric buses and hydrogen fuel buses, then the, the bus emissions would also be reduced. Um, even the, the demand for transport because it's free means that the buses would be, uh, more frequently used, which means that there would be, um, a benefit to putting more buses on the road, which means that we would be able to invest in, uh, more advanced rolling stock, which is electric buses, hydrogen fuel, fuel cell buses.
Yeah, because certainly, I, I don't know about now, but recently, sort of recently, um, one of the streets in Glasgow, which takes a lot, a lot, a lot of buses, was the most polluted street in Europe.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so for those that know Glasgow, it was Hope Street, um, but for those that don't, it was, it was the most polluted street in Glasgow. As a councillor, your ward is Govern Hill, as you've already mentioned. Can you describe, uh, the area to people who don't know Glasgow and the challenges and the improvements they've needed in the area? Or, and, and the, the good parts of the area?
Yeah, well, um, Govern Hill and Gorbals, in fact, Southside City is the word. So I have, uh, with three other councillors' responsibility for two quite different areas. Um, Gorbals is the subject, is the site of a massive regeneration project. Over the last thirty years, they flattened the place and are rebuilding it. Um, so that is a lot of development, a lot of, um, really exciting new projects where the local people are actually getting involved in, um, shepherding through the, the master plans. And they are actually very activist and active in their, uh, in making sure that what happens goes. So new Gorbals Housing Association and the developers, um, they're building a lot of really, really high quality housing. Um, and also what's happening is that because the development area, the redevelopment area, um, is happening, we can put in things like, uh, twenty minute, uh, regions where all of the facilities that, and, and, uh, resources that the residents actually need are within twenty minutes walk. Um, so that part of it's actually really exciting. Um, in Govern Hill, differently, it's a lot of very old housing, closes that have been built, you know, prior to nineteen thirteen. Um, and also this is historically, as well as now, one of the major, um, areas where new Glaswegians come. So the different communities in the area, there's eighty eight different languages spoken.
Wow.
Yeah, that's a lot. Which is fantastic and it makes the place really vibrant. Um, and at the Govern Hill Carnival Parade just last weekend, we had the Roma musicians and we had the Afro Caribbean musicians and, um, you, you have all of these contributions to Glasgow's culture. Um, but what that also means is that in inclusion, you can't guarantee that because these people are new to the, the city, um, that they know about things like, uh, the, the council actually puts on Benuplets. So how do you communicate this to them? Possibly most of them don't actually read English.
Yeah.
So we need to have translations of materials put out. But also, um, one of the most effective things that, uh, Govern Hill Housing Association's doing along with the Glasgow City Council is they have people who speak Romanian just walking up the closed stairs, knocking doors and explaining to people.
Oh, right, wow.
But that's only one person who speaks Romanian. We need more people doing that, which means that we need funding, which means that this has to come from the council budget. Also, translations are work. You don't just get somebody who speaks the language to, uh, to be a volunteer or like give them vouchers or something. You need actual good quality translations for these things, which means that you actually pay for a job. And I refuse to, um, do anything that is exploiting anybody. Any work that I get done will get paid for at proper rates.
Good.
So that's, translations is an issue, um. But yeah, that whole kind of community engagement, if you're meeting people on their own kind of terms and at least trying to communicate in their own language or one of the languages that they speak, because you can't actually have translations in eighty eight different languages, you have to pick a couple. Um, one person I was, uh, had a conversation with reckoned that we should have it in Urdu, Punjabi and Polish. I reckon probably also Romanian.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, you, you have the big kind of Pakistani community and the, the other Asian communities, the Urdu and Punjabi are the, the languages that, um, they know best.
Yeah.
Um, so that would be one of the better things to do is to actually meet the people who are living there on their terms and not demand that they fit in with the imperialist city requirements and, you know, you're here, you will speak English now. No, that's not right. Because, I mean, let's face it, English speakers don't.
No. Uh, you go abroad and get your burn societies and everything else where the Scots, so keep that going. One of the things about, um, your ward, it's also, uh, part of the constituency for Scotland's First Minister, Nicholas Sturgeon. Um, is, is that a, a helper, a, a hindrance to things happening in the area?
It's actually a good help because, um, the, the First Minister is actually quite an active constituency minister. For all that she's actually got her, um, the First Minister duties, um, but she does spend time in the, the constituency, um, doing stuff, usually on Fridays. Um, but she's gonna be coming to New Gorbals' uh, opening of their latest accommodation block next Friday. And the councillors and the, the local organisations can, uh, appeal to her to help push through, for example, uh, legislation like the, um, the, the Greens obviously got the, the buses. But what we're needing to do is get stronger legislation so that it's easier to prosecute flight tippers, for example. And that's Scottish government work. But having the First Minister actually being in the, the wards and able to be toured around the bad areas and to be able to talk to the people who are affected by that, then that gives, um, more emphasis to that. I'll also say that Alison Thielis, who's the, the Westminster MP, um, for the area, is also very good and very active. And I have a lot of respect for the other, uh, the Two Labour and other SNP councillors that I'm working beside.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I like to do a lot of cross-party work and I don't really believe in, in pointless opposition.
Uh, you're Glasgow's first trans councillor. Can you tell us if that has affected you in campaigning, people's voting intentions, uh, or your time so far as a councillor, including any positives or negatives you've experienced through that time?
Yeah, um, it doesn't seem to have affected me. I, I didn't get particularly, um, any kind of abuse in campaigning. I did actually get quite a lot of support in fact because the LGBT community loved that one of theirs was, um, running for office and the trans community loved that one of theirs was running for office. And in fact, the Greens' group now has seven LGBT councillors out of ten.
Yep.
Which as a percentage, that is the highest in the country. Other people actually came, well, we've got maybe eleven or something like that and said that they got the most, but as a percentage, we are the best. Um, so when I got elected, there were a couple of abusive emails, but that has disappeared.
That's good.
Um, to be honest, the people who object to transphobe are a very vocal, very small minority. Um, and the public measures that are being demanded by newspaper writers and by politicians who want to distract from, as I was, I, I will be talking about, um, the, the National Bank robbery. Um, these are look over there efforts, they're not actually real.
Yeah.
And people either were supportive, uh, and voting against, for example, Alba because they were actually campaigning for, um, quote unquote, family values.
Well, certainly on gag, we're very glad to hear that.
Yeah, um, so people were actually saying, um, at polling stations to the Alba campaigners, I'm not voting for transphobes, I'm walking in. Um, the, my colleagues have been nothing but supportive on all of the parties. Uh, the council officers and the communities that I'm working in have been nothing but supportive. Um, I've had no, uh, problems with anybody in the wards or, um, in the council. And to be honest, it just goes to show that either people don't care or they're happy to see somebody actually getting on with being, um, living their best life.
Uh, good.
Yeah.
Do you think that the current cost of living crisis and Brexit strengthen the case for an independent Scotland?
Drastically. Um, the, the, the problem with the cost of living crisis is that the Tories in Westminster are recklessly disbanded the limits on profiteering by the energy companies. They actually, uh, I can't remember what word I'm looking for, disbanded or do, um, but they, they took away the caps.
Deregulated?
No, not even, yeah, deregulated, but they, they actually, no, they abolished, they abolished the caps on, uh, energy prices. Which then allowed the energy companies to go nuts. Um, and immediately they started jacking up prices. What's also happening is that there's, uh, because Brexit and because they can claim, um, sometimes genuinely, sometimes not, um, that the cost of imports is going up, that the high street, uh, shops have been racking up their, uh, the, the prices of basic goods even, um, over the past, basically, uh, as soon as Brexit became, uh, ratified and official, the prices on the high street started going up. Um, so what you've got is, um, criminal mismanagement on the part of Westminster, literally criminal mismanagement because it is profiteering. It is, um, out and out fraud. Except that there isn't actually a law against it because the Westminster government made sure there was no law against it. You also have cronyism, I mentioned the, the seventy billion pounds that's been earmarked for a two man consultancy to do, um, just transition.
That's unbelievable.
Yeah, but it is, you know, you, you saw the, the thirty six billion that went to test increase and, and disappeared into a hole in the grounds or a hole in the Caribbean, in fact. Um. So all of this corruption is happening in Westminster. And it's because of the, um, culture of dominance that England and the upper classes of England and the newspapers run out of England, um, feel that they can do what they like. And then you get, um, Liz Truss saying, what about Scotland, what about Nicholas Sturgeon, oh, just ignore her. Um, so, so that is the culture in Westminster. And what happens is that if Scotland actually was independent, then A, we would be able to rejoin the EU and immediately cut the costs of imports and exports. We would drastically improve, um, the prospects for Scottish businesses to have a better economy, make more money, pay better wages, um, and build up the economy because the economy is not helped by cutting taxes on plutocrats. The economy is helped by paying fair wages. And also actually genuinely by having a progressive income tax system so that richer people do contribute to the public purse, which once again Westminster isn't allowing because rich people have the Tories in their pockets. Is that libelous to say? I mean, it's obvious. Um, so, you know, the, 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 um, income tax could be made fairer, the money could be invested in the Scottish industry and Scottish, uh, economy. Because here's the thing, when you pay people, then the economy improves. Because the economy is movement of money and it's not contrary to what Margaret Thatcher said. It is not a household, it's a circle. Your spending is my income, my income is your spending. How do you actually, if, if, if the, if the cycle stalls, how do you, uh, make it move better? You don't do that by taxing away the actual circle, the, the, the money that's moving. You do it by pumping more in, by paying fair wages for public sector work. Public sector employees buy goods. Buying goods helps, um, businesses run because, and, and it helps employ and pay the wages of the high street workers. And it also helps pay the wages of the manufacturing sector. And buying services pays the wages of the service sector. All of those people also buy goods and. All of those people also buy goods and services, which also increases the economy. And they will pay taxes, which increases the amount of money that the Scottish government has to be able to pay this on the public sector and again around the circle. And this, quite briefly, is the con that all of the politicians who don't want you to notice, when they say that we have to tighten our belts and institute austerity, this is because they're, not that they're economically literate, it's that they're hoping you are and that you don't notice. What austerity does is that it reduces the working of the economy and allows offshore, non-domestic, non-taxpayers to basically pocket all of the money that is being generated by your efforts. Your efforts should stay in the economy. If we have Scotland actually having its own economy, then we get rid of the parasites. We have a fairer income tax system and economic system and a possibility for investment. And also, Scotland has probably the biggest reserves of renewable energy or among the biggest reserves of renewable energy in the world. We also have a huge reserve of oil, which is what is propping up the British economy. Because the economy is failing because taxes are not being paid by the rich folk. What they're doing is propping up the economy by loans backed by income from the oil fields. In 10, 20, 30 years' time, the oil fields are going to have to be closed down. So what that means is that because it's Scotland's oil, because geographically the reason that Britain has so much oil and Norway doesn't is because of Shetlands and the way the maps are drawn. All of the, the money that is propping up the nearly bankrupt UK economy is going to default. All of those loans are going to default, all of the guarantees of those loans are going to be non-existent. So if Scotland actually goes independent, then all of those disappear as well, which is why you get the Tories saying, "Yeah, we're never going to let Scotland leave."
Thank you very much for your time, I like that, that's been a great interview.
See if you can edit that rant about economics into something that makes sense.
And we'll speak to some time again soon.
Cheers, yeah.